Authority.
And I don't know. Oh, you have yours. That's good. Okay. Perfect. Bye bye.
Yeah, you'll just have to use yours so you don't get that feedback.
We apologize for the. We apologize to the technical difficulties we have. We're back to broadcasting the meeting. And with that said, we were returning from executive session and we'll proceed proceed with the. Published agenda. Are there anybody here with citizens comments? No, there's no citizen comment. Is anybody online with a citizen comment? Raise your hand? No? All right. With with that said, we're go go to this special meeting. Agenda and we'll start with. Approval of a new policy five, six, nine, five students and personal electronic devices.
Do I have a?
Uh, board president, um, my understanding was that, um, there were questions that wanted to be had on the floor. I recognize that our board trustee Roy C. Dong is not present. They had to step away to, um, resolve a employment, um, call. So I don't know in terms of our operations, how do we like to proceed?
I'm currently looking over all of them and see if there's any discussions points that we could get our discussions and the superintendents out of the way. And then see when Kellyanne gets back, give her the opportunity to comment and we won't take the vote till she return. Yep. Well, there's only only the all three. So there's only really, um. Three items, right? So, um.
I believe there are two items. Is there a third item?
Yeah. Two, only two?
I mean, I guess for the sake of time, we will have to up, you know, we have to conduct business. So we'll do what we have to do.
I was counting the. It's a first and second read. Oh, I can explain this and I don't need Kellyanne. There's nineteen hundred dollars that we could spend for pouches. And we, there's a New York state requirement under Kathy Hochul to make sure everybody have these. Internet devices in place by August first. All right. So there's the legal requirement to have them in the policies adopted by. By August first. And then there's the carrot, which is nineteen thousand dollars. Not a very big carrot, you know, maybe a little mini carrot, so to speak. And that's why they're on the reading. Did anybody be?
Can you clarify what the nineteen thousand dollars are for?
The nineteen thousand dollars is in support of your policy to accommodate the new internet action. So I guess it's it's open ended, but in our case, the most expedient way.
For clarification, we're not voting on accepting or moving forward with a budgetary.
No, that's we have to get the grant, but we don't qualify to the grant if we have the, if we don't have this done by August first.
If I could clarify, the reason for the expedited treatment is that the board currently has a policy that requires a policy approval process that involves a two-step reading process. So essentially what we're doing is bypassing that multi-step read in order to get this policy in place by the state's mandated deadline of August first.
My my comment on the policy overall and it's the same comment I had when we, you know, Poughkeepsie City School District had already proactively had a policy in place for secondary, I think, specific to the high school. And then went to the middle school subsequently afterward. What I want to say specific to that, and it's a repeat of, um, my comment previously about it was the Poughkeepsie City School District, I think. Uh, and this, and and I know that there's been some resistance with me sharing personal history, so I won't necessarily say that. But as a parent, it's really, um, concerning when communications already are are difficult in our district, uh, making contact. And so as a parent, I had shared my concerns initially because if if my child cannot communicate with me during school hours, what's the mechanism we have in place? And has that mechanism been communicated to the external to parents and community members? Um, at the time, we did not have a formalized process. I don't think even there still is. I will say to report back that I have uh, experienced, um, communications in fact happening. Students are able to go to the office, make a phone call to the parent. That has happened and pleased to see that. I just don't know from a systems perspective if we have a formalized process. So given that this is being reintroduced in our policies. And I saw Hochul's piece that it said you need to have a formalized process for communications with students and their parents. So, um, because it was specific to her, um, order that, um, just curious to see what, how we're going to manage that on our end.
I would hopefully because you have a policy and then you have procedures. We would get those procedures in place. Hopefully, Mr. Mock, by the opening of school. Or maybe if, you know, when the questions start to come in, we should have that. You know, those policies in place. And I will say I was a little. If you really read this policy, they they don't make believe that distance learning doesn't exist. They leave the staff the opportunity to integrate that in their lessons and whatever. So I thought it it was a step in the right direction that it was broader and recognize its part of society. Would I agree with it? We don't get the vote on that. This comes down from uh, State Department of Ed, but we did our, um. You know, and every, I was glad we got some input in time. And with that said, um, are there any more comments on it?
Looking at you and Kellyanne.
Yes, sorry, apologies. Had to step away for a work call. Uh, just a couple, um, questions, probably Mr. Mott for you, just, um, verbiage and logistics. On the other, the pages aren't numbered, second page. It states generally, the district is not responsible for stolen, lost or damaged. I guess my question would be, when would it be? Right? Because it said generally. And again, it doesn't have to be answered, I guess, this very second, but just, or Kate, I guess I can turn you to like. That's it says generally, um, I just, I feel like with a policy such as this and how we communicate to parents and the community, we're very, very specific.
So Bob, I can, oh, sorry. I can respond to that, uh, to Kellyanne's question that, um, there's always liability. It's one of the reasons I don't care for this statewide policy because there is always liability, uh, when the district takes possession of personal devices. And as a result, many districts around the state are going to a model where, uh, they're trying a backpack first approach before going to the district taking possession of the items for that very reason. Uh, we had to defend cases, uh, over the years involving small claims court cases where uh, cell phones have been confiscated and damaged, computers have been confiscated and damaged. These are expensive devices and it's one of the reasons that I wish that the state had not put us in the position of having to take possession of these things. So I'm not sure why NISBA is proposing that language. That's part of their sample model policy. But what I can tell all of you is don't be mistaken, there absolutely is liability to the district, um, in taking possession of expensive students' electronic devices. No matter what the policy says.
Right, exactly. So do I hear you, Kate, that that language doesn't sit well with you? And should we read or because that's what NISBA is recommending, that's what we're using?
Yeah, I would say that there's comfort in going with the state trends, right? And this is what every other district in the state is adopting. So there's probably a benefit to the district. Yeah, in keeping the language consistent with other districts in the region.
Yeah, in the region, because again, the one in New York City doesn't read this way. So that's why I'm just asking, because and I don't expect ours in New York City to read like ours. On the same page, Mr. Mott, it says the district will notify parents in writing of the communication protocol at the beginning of each school year. And upon enrollment, are we expecting parents to sign it? Again, just logistics and what will be the means of notification to the parents?
The policy is going to be sent out to all district administrators.
Okay.
Once, once approved. I do have a letter drafted as well. Once a policy is approved, to go out to parents and guardians to inform them of the new policy. And that will be such the communication would include, uh, protocols for seven, six through twelve students using the storage pouches and how that will be communicated with them. There'll be a lot of also ownership on our building rentals as well. Uh, regards to managerial, operational, of how they will confiscate or and or collect cell phones who do not comply with the policy.
Okay. And at the bottom of that page, it says, uh, within the, right? So basically they can't have any of these internet-enabled devices on person during school hours. Uh, and then within the boundary of a school district or BOSI's facility. So again, um. So the students that go to BOSI's, the expectation is they house their phone prior to going to BOSI's or they just follow BOSI's regulation or like, do we, do we talk to BOSI's and what that plan looks like for our students that go?
The, the, we've had a, a very intensive conversation with the Duchess Superintendent. And so everyone is wrestling with this concept of how and who will be responsible, responsible. It is bell to bell. Bell to bell can also include authentic field trips as well. So with that said, ideally, the goal would be to minimize and 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 remove the distraction. And if going to BOSI's is an educational opportunity, we want to remove the distraction that includes cell phones.
But to to respond, Ms. Royce, your own question, BOSI's would be responsible for enforcing its own.
On their end.
Correct. BOSI's are also subject to the state of bell to bell. So the BOSI's would have to enforce their own policy once that student is under their custody and care.
Yeah. So I think we're clear with that, right? With the students and the parents.
And, um, we're so used to saying BOSI's, we do have to say other out of district programs. Because the STEM is housed in Wapinsers. All right, so.
Or DC.
Yeah, or 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 DC. So we, as we write these policies, the same way I said, you couldn't use the brand name of the pouch. It's a security pouch. All right, you know, we'll have to look at like maybe a generic for both, for the four things combined.
Right.
What's the, Kaito tells what's a generic off campus.
Language.
Language.
How do you say that in one more?
Yep, yep.
All right, thank you.
Great. Um, and then if students lose or damage their individual pouches, their parents are responsible for paying the replacement. Transparently, I did get as an individual board member, some parents who called me very upset about this last year. Where is, like, what is that process? If, first of all, how much are they responsible to pay? And what is that procedure and process? Is the school collecting? Are they coming here to district office to pay into the business office? What does that process look like for parents?
We'll, we'll work on those particular policy steps along the way. Um, again, this is being imposed on us across the state to implement a bell to bell procedurally, step by step, that those things will will work those.
Perfect. And. And again, I know this is NISBA sample, right? Um, I don't even know what page it's on, but it states enforcement of this policy is chiefly the responsibility of building administrative staff. However, all designated employees are expected to assist in enforcement. I guess, again, not a question, a statement, just being very clear on your expectation on what that looks like on all levels. You know, we can't put things in place if we not going to have a process, you know, in the spirit of what Fatima was saying. What is the process so that we can enforce? To make sure that this is is fluid. The next paragraph said, for students out of compliance with this policy, the device will be held in the school office until the end of the school day. The first time this happens, the student may retrieve the device and the parent will be notified. And then the for subsequent instances, it was redlined. And then it just went on to say the district will ex- exercise reasonable care. So I guess just from a language standpoint, we're saying for the first time it's this, but then there's nothing in the language that says what's happening thereafter. I don't know if we want to take out the first time and just have an established, this is what it is. Or does the code, what does our code of conduct say? Right now I'm crossing into code of conduct on the progressive discipline. What, we got to make sure that the documents marry each other.
So just keep in mind, this is a K-12, this is a seven through 12 policy and and for our elementary students as well, they can bring cell phones. And so ideally, what we're looking to do is to purchase, uh, cell phone storage cabinets for our elementary, five elementary buildings. That second offense, again, there will be some administrative oversight and responsibility for how they would like to operationally deal with this particular policy in their individual buildings.
Okay. So I think that needs to be stated in here and in the but in this paragraph, do you see what I'm saying, Kate? The first time, this is what will happen. This was redlined for subsequent, and then it goes right to this. So I think in the policy, it's it's stating what will happen as a first time. But then it, and then we want to make sure in the code of conduct that's that parents will sign for. It's very clear on this is the the progressive discipline. First time, it's this. Subsequently thereafter, it's this.
And and one thing.
There's no page number. I'm sorry, Mr. Hold on.
One thing to clarify as well, that state law prohibits the use of out-of-school suspension as a consequence for cellphone violation. Okay, so, um, we cannot be suspending students solely because they violated this policy. That's prohibited by. So that, I agree with Kellyanne that that will need to be reconciled with our code of conduct as well.
So to to that point that you're making, um, I thought in-school suspension is considered a suspension. Is that right?
It is not for the purposes of this law. So this law prohibits out out-of-school suspension, uh, as a consequence for a policy violation. It does not prohibit the use of in-school suspension or detention or other restorative measures to address, uh, misconduct.
But isn't in-school suspension still categorized as a suspension out separate of this policy?
It's not. It's treated differently under state law because the student's not removed from the educational setting. So there's no due process that goes along with, minimal due process that goes along with an in-school suspension versus an out-of-school suspension. So this law specifically prohibits the use of out-of-school suspension to address a policy violation. It does not prohibit in suspension or detention. The only thing I would add is for our classified students with IEPs or 504 plans, removal from the classroom would still be prohibited because that's a disciplinary change of placement, which would be prohibited. But for general education students, in-school suspension or detention may be used to address policy violations.
I asked a clarifying question because I have experienced, um, exactly what you just mentioned on the second part is a student with an IEP removed from their classroom, um, would be prohibited and that has happened. So I just addressed it as.
I hope that would not be appropriate and would need to be addressed by Mr. Mott because students with disabilities cannot be removed from their current classroom setting uh, without triggering the manifestation rules. And we want to make sure we're abiding by those rules carefully.
So, um, I'm pleased that this is coming up because this, I did address it, um, on this very, um, forum. Um, and my, my concern that I was addressing is when you're taking out a student from, uh, who who is in need of those additional supports. Um, and you've removed them, you're removing them essentially from the schoolwork they need to, they need to be working on. So wondering about judgment, when, when a teacher is making a judgment call on who gets to go to ISS and if it's prohibited to, uh, put a student with an IEP or 504 in ISS, like, in practice, what is that going to look like?
It's permissible up to the 10 days that are authorized under the manifestation rules. Beyond 10 days, however, you would have to do a manifestation determination for that removal. And if it will, if there's a nexus between the student's disability and their, in this case, the cellphone violation, that we would not be able to remove them from the classroom. The removal from the classroom for in-school suspension is treated the same as an out-of-school suspension when it comes to students with disabilities, not general education students.
And I, I think too, it's important, right? Because sometimes I think it's thought that if there's a special education teacher, certified teacher in ISS that counts, it's not about that. It's about you're removing them from their placement, their program. So even if there's a special education teacher, licensed teacher assigned to that space, it's still not permissible because you're removing them from their program. And I think that's critical. Yeah.
Um, and then the second piece I wanted to address, um, that wouldn't probably be something that, um, from, um, a broad stroke, um, across all districts, uh, but specific to our district in secondary levels that when you need a pouch replacement, right? For example, and there's a delay in getting the pouch replacement, a student, well, the phone isn't just getting confiscated, a student could essentially just keep the phone home. The, the concern with that is that if you have to navigate through a community where there are safety concerns and you don't have access to your cellphone to call for help or even to have a, you know, some parents will, um, follow their child through, um, you know, 360 an app, um, there are safety concerns related to that. And so wondering about if we've considered that, uh, specific to, um, managing safety.
Um, I, go ahead, Mr. Green, I have two more things.
Okay.
I was just gonna.
Can I make a, a statement? Typically, um, this would have gone through the policy committee. And we would have had a first reading and a second reading. There's nothing preventing us of bringing this policy back and having in the policy committee and have a wider discussion.
Nothing at all, but I would recommend you approve it today. So you're in compliance with state law.
That's what I was going.
Says the attorney.
Now, what I would like to do is take the vote on this. I will schedule it for a policy committee meeting. And at that meeting, the staff can send recommended changes. The teachers, everybody can look at this, you know, I've only dealt with this problem for 12 years at the river where we share a space and they all bring their cell phones and they always accuse Poughkeepsie of stealing everybody's cell phones. So it's not that much different when you step back from these. So if, if there's, I just don't want to that way we can move forward and put it in the policy committee and bring it back on and have these discussions.
My, my vote to move this forward is contingent on that follow-up. Just I want to walk that on the record.
Becky, can you schedule this for the first thing in our, what, our policy committee meeting?
Definitely. I agree with that because some of us do use it as a tracking mechanism for our children for after-school programs. So we can revisit, I agree. We can revisit it.
And we'll do it in two readings.
Exactly.
So you want me to hold my last question?
What's the last question? And it, because we're not going to change it here. So what's the last question?
Right, but this is for public, right? So we're supposed to have the conversation in public.
Right, or or in the policy committee, but go ahead.
Right, but then we have to bring it back for discussion anyway.
We are going to bring it back.
Oh, okay.
Policy committee. And then it's got any.
I can hold my last question and comment for next public session.
All right. Can I have a poll for a vote? Do I have a first?
Um, as stated, my, I will support, um, contingent to the follow-up, so moved.
Any second?
Second.
Do you want to make it a roll call vote or just a vote?
Ms. Royce Hiron?
Yes.
Ms. Martinez Santiago?
As I stated, I will support contingent on a follow-up.
Ms. Sheeranza?
Absolutely, contingent upon a follow-up.
And Mr. Creed?
Yes, and I sure will have a first reading in our next meeting. Do I say on?
Motion.
Motion carries. All right. The next is an administrative appointment and I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, uh, board president. To, we, we are, I am very pleased at this moment to bring to the board and community a, a candidate, uh, that has gone through an intensive interview process to serve the Poughkeepsie City School District as the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. This candidate comes to us with a vast amount of experience at the elementary, middle, high level combination of district, um, leadership and experience in various capacities. So it is, uh, my request to this board that the resolution that set forth in front of you be approved. We, before the conclusion of this meeting, can hear from our candidate, uh, our community, um, our board members and those in the audience can um, hear a, a statement from her as she prepare to do so. But my recommendation to the board is to, uh, consider, uh, my recommendation for uh, this candidate to serve as the superintendent of schools.
Um, we don't have the table set up. You said you was going to step up and make a comment. Did you mean that?
Well, while if there are any.
At the point of order, I think we should move forward with the vote.
And then.
Because then would officially, yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion on the vote?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. And, um, just so it's still in the public record, because we are going to adjourn and keep going um, with, uh, a session of our council explaining the the functioning of a school board for the new and alt, like myself, members of the school board. So, um, where can she speak?
Well, she is, she stationed where she is. I see.
We got it.
We, we won't make her come forward, but maybe, maybe she just stand, Ms. Turner, Ms. Jessica Turner, congratulations to you. Really looking forward to you. Make sure that microphone is on, oh, Mr. Cook.
It is, yes.
Just wanted to, uh, say congratulations to you. Uh, welcome to Poughkeepsie, uh, part of the team. We're going to champion, uh, for, for our children together. You have a nice representation. I see you're speaking there with the many of our supporters and our, our colleagues here from, from both unions that are going to be working closely with you to get this work done. So once again, congratulations to you. So community and board, let me present to you, Ms. Jessica Turner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for uh, allowing me this opportunity. I just wanna say that I'm grateful to join the district to be a champion for our kids and our families, and I am just so excited to jump in and join along side, all my colleagues, um, to do what's good for kids, creating spaces where they can be brilliant, shine, and just help them find all this success so they can move on and have amazing lives. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So, well, Mr. Board President, again, I, I, I'm very pleased to welcome uh, Ms. Turner. Thank you very much for your vote this, this morning. Uh, this is a vital position and assisting in moving the work forward. Uh, Mr. Board President, that concludes my comments.
Alright, um, I'm, may I do something? I'm not gonna ask for um, comments. We have a, we have two back-to-back sessions at the Wallace um, Center in Hyde Park this weekend, so if anybody wants to come and join and, and not join, but listen to our conversations, uh, right, it's an open meeting. And so we'll be there for, not doing anything on Saturday and Sunday. You can come and listen, but um, it's not, it's not a formal meeting, but we're very excited about it. Um, we, we're doing it differently than we have in the past, and we'll be sharing the results of that meeting with the community. Do I have a motion to close this meeting?
Of what?
Of course.
Are we?
We're just going to adjourn.
Okay, uh, so we're adjourning?
And then we're staying for Kate, education. We're adjourning.
So does that mean we officially close our meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Alright, now, um, hello, so we're gonna play Kate, Kate, your, do you have any to go, because it's more formal about how the.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your acceptance.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna retake it in a more inti- intimate setting of Mr. Mott's office. There will be no discussion of HR, anything on the school board. It's the functioning of the school board, educational. It's not gonna be business.